Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. The Select Board Monday, June 24, 2013, time 6 o'clock. Tom, will you please read us some of the legal statements?
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Thank you, John. Okay, we have three sets of minutes. First one is from May 31st. It goes back, if you recall, we did not have enough people present who had attended that meeting to vote on. So, we'll undertake a motion now. We do have enough folks here to approve the May 31st minutes.
Is that May 31st or was that June 6th?
I think it was May 31st, wasn't it?
There's three sets, supposedly. I think we only got two.
Yes, yeah, I only got two sets.
Yeah.
They were in your previous page.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, we're just moving.
Let's all move on the May.
I'll second it.
Okay. There were no corrections. That was a short meeting we had.
Yep.
Yeah, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next is June 6th.
A move may be accepted as printed?
Any discussion on June 6th?
No, can I move down?
Any corrections? Not? All in favor?
I'm going to abstain.
And we got one abstention?
Two.
Two abstentions.
Yeah, that was the one of Sharon.
That was when we were at that.
That was the full meeting.
So, we have five, four, two abstentions.
Okay.
And the last one is June 10th.
I'd like to know maybe a question. This is in the evening. Appears my father showed up for this meeting and stayed the entire meeting.
I see Jim Carroll present.
I didn't notice, but then he morphed into Joe, down farther into the meeting.
Several motions. I'm sure you'd rather me than him.
I moved they -- then I wasn't at that meeting either.
I'll move they're accepted with that correction.
Okay. We have a second. We have a second from John. Okay, you'll see. Any discussion? We have some folks missing here. Okay, Tom and Sharon are missing. So, all in favor? That's five, four. All against? None? We'll abstain. Two abstentions.
Abstain.
Okay. Now, we've got to do those things. Now, the warrants. We'll start with Tom.
No questions.
Greg?
Nothing.
John?
Nope.
Justin?
No.
Jim?
No sir.
Sharon?
I just have one, and I'm sorry, Dan.
All right. I've got lots of things going here, so.
Do you? Okay.
I was going to ruin his record, anyway.
It's on page four. About halfway down, it says financial operations. It says Project BRF.
Yes, that's a payment to the State of Vermont. I had to highlight myself. What is that? State of Vermont, and it's regarding the bridge that ran, I believe it's across the boundary of the bridge.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. And mine's on page one, Dan. Just a company haven't recognized. It's 304-257, BDP Industries Gearbox for Press.
That's on page one, John?
Page one. About two-thirds way down. 304-258.
Oh, BD, I thought you said BDP, too. BDP, that's a piece of machinery for the sewer treatment plant.
Okay. I saw it there. All right. That's all I've got. Okay, next item, citizens. Abby, you first?
I'm here about the water and sewer. Oh, sorry. What?
Water and sewer is going to be on the agenda.
Mary, you're up. Why don't we recognize you first, Mary?
Good evening. I'm just back to see if there's been any further discussion on the Safford Street situation. I've had several residents call me to see if there was some discussion that's been had going forth to mitigate or resolve some of those issues. I did see that, as I had told you at the last meeting, the top of Dewey and Monument has no truck through, no bus through. The top of Dewey Street extension of Monument has it over on Gage Street and Branch Street. There's a number of places throughout the town, and not that I'm here advocating that those signs are put up everywhere. I'm just hoping that we're looking at a truck plan somewhere to try to get folks on the bypass which it originally was slated for. That's my first issue. And then, if there is anyone that can give us an update on the Sunset Mobile Park water issue, I've had a number of emails in response, or in regards to where it's at at this point.
Let's just deal with that one first, Dan.
Is it with the state?
All I can comment to is with the town.
Yeah.
Currently focused, we've been working with our attorney, Rob Wilmington. We're trying to get a hearing date. So, we are kind of at a standstill until we can get the court to issue some direction on how we proceed with that. It is in foreclosure.
Yep.
It also, I also know that the State of Vermont is looking to see if perhaps there should be some sort of a receivership for that property. But, as far as the town's action, we're waiting for court hearings that we can get direction from the court as to how we can proceed.
So, the state at this point is not involved because of those complexities?
The state, I was going to say the state is not as involved as we hoped they would be. We had hoped that they would join us in the court action. They have not. I cannot speak for the state as to why they have not, have not taken certain actions. But, the town is moving forward with their processes.
Okay, well, there are a number of concerned, I guess, park owners that the issue seems to still be in place. And I'm just hoping that we get to some kind of resolve or not. But, are they aware of this, or are they notified on a period? I don't know what.
You say that.
I guess, I don't know what our stand is for those folks where there is a water issue.
Our stand is that there has been a well-water order notice been in place for several months now. We have a property owner that is not responding to the bank or to the town, that has claims that have no money or ability to deal with the problem. It's in foreclosure. We're moving forward with our hearing. I just don't know what the state will do. We should try to keep the state informed and ask them to work with us. To date, they have not been terribly helpful, but.
Have you reached out to any of the legislative body? Not that we will be anywhere successful, but have you reached out to, for any of those partnerships to see if we can move something along or not? If it's appropriate?
I don't know what Kevin Goodheaven handles. I know that he has been very good at contact, or we know very clearly, the administrators of the Department of the Secretary as well. And, again, we've been constantly pushed to Mr. Kestner, their attorney, and they have not proceeded with any court action on the state level. We are proceeding, and our attorney has asked for a hearing to move forward with our process.
I appreciate it, just if you can keep it somewhere on the focus.
Mary, let me ask you, the information of people contacting you, are they concerned of what's going to happen when it goes into foreclosure more so than they are the water?
I think they're right now concerned, at least three of the emails that came to me were concerned with the water and if this goes, continues to go on. I think there is probably in the mix of that, the concerns with what's going to happen.
Are they tenants, though?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. I wouldn't be here otherwise. And technically, they're not my district, but I had a number of them reach out. So, I'm here as a town, trying, you know, citizen, trying to say if somehow that could be kept on the focus. And if we might, at some point, have an update on possible truck activity within our town would be appreciated.
The, let me, okay, have you heard anything from the police looking on Bradford Street?
I have not. I know that Stewart was going to look in particular at the concern mentioned about box trailers going through there.
Yeah.
Because the construction that's going to be over soon, if not already over, I don't know what the follow-up plan was, unfortunately.
Well, the day after the meeting, I had three phone calls from residents saying two things. One, there's no way that the density that was reported at the meeting could even be possible for so many trucks per hour for 24-hour period. The second call was, the trucks that they see are the service trucks, the Federal Express primarily, that go in service, ever-ready batter, Energizer battery going in and out of that thing. That's not to say that the trucks working off of the mountain aren't going through there. They are, too. They're also going down there.
That was.
So, we're still looking at that. But whether we put a sign up on the interior town like that?
That wasn't necessarily what I was advocating. I'm just saying, as we're looking at where we can with truckers coming through our town to hopefully take that bypass which it was built for.
Right.
That we, you know, possibly, hopefully, direct them that way. Because I think you were, Joe, the one that said, it's not on the GPS even, that that truck was there.
That's right.
So, if the town or someone could connect with folks, that it is somehow there, it probably would be a lot easier trip and more direct.
I'll follow up on that, Mary.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I've been rooting through there when I can, too, just to see if I can figure out where the trucks are coming from and going to.
Yeah, and I do, too.
I haven't been successful in seeing anything, but it's been raining a few of the times, too.
Absolutely. Again, I'm just asking for your consideration.
Mary, is it premature to ask you, because I know you'll know, how successful Saturday night was with the Relay for Life?
Extremely successful.
Was it really?
Yep. At opening ceremony, we probably had over 2,000 people.
That's terrific.
So, it honors our community, and we always thank the people that have stepped to the plate to be a part every year. Our community has a.
Well, one of them stepped to the mic tonight, because, Mary, everybody knows you've been a big ringleader for that thing and making it happen, so.
Done it for 18 years.
As a cancer survivor, you know, I appreciate all the work you've done, and thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Can I speak from here, or?
Really, the people can't hear you at home unless you're at the microphone. And please, we know you, please introduce yourself for the audience to know.
I'm Abigail Shapiro, and I live on Morgan Street, where I've lived the greater part of my life, and I'm a owner. And I'm here because the water rates are going up again for the fourth year. 12 percent, 11 percent, 11 percent, and I believe they're going to be going up 11 percent again. And nobody is saying what I'm going to say right now, which is, they're crippling. They're crippling to individuals, they're crippling to the community. I mean, I feel bad for the real estate agents who say, oh, well, your water rate this year is, uh, 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 and next year it's going up, uh, uh, you know? Because this is, this is not good for our community. I feel like there was an idea proposed. I completely understand. I understand the infrastructure is failing, we don't have a sludge fund, we need more money. I have that whole thing. But, I feel like an idea was proposed, it was rubber stamped, and we're rubber stamping it every year instead of doing some more creative thinking. I don't think property taxes would ever go up at this rate without discussion, outcry. Everybody's been remarkably silent. I mean, these are going up faster than my kid's college tuition. It's very hard for us homeowners. And I'm, so I'm here to ask for some creative thinking and maybe some courage. And I'm going to say the dreaded word, meters. I know, we had it, put it on the ballot once, and nobody wanted them. So, 4,000 of us, out of 13,000, have water meters. And the rest of the people have no accountability for the amount of water that they use. This isn't the 1960s anymore. This is a resource that we need as a community to be responsible for and to make people accountable for use. 20 years from now, we might not have the water resources we have now. We don't know. Climate's changing, we've had droughts, but, you know, we happen to live in a particularly fertile area where there's a lot of rain. That could change. I happen to have a water meter because I divided up my house and put in a college tuition apartment. So, now, because I have two kitchens, I have to have a water meter. Once it was a single-family home, there were, there were five of us. Three kids, washing machine ran all day. You know, five people use a lot of water. I guarantee you that my household uses less now. Two single women, one washing machine, same two bathrooms, two kitchens, but I'm sure we're not using as much water as we did. So, I say to myself, geez, I'm probably helping to support the water usage of somebody with three, four, five kids, or somebody who waters their lawn every day, or somebody who has a pool. None of these people have to pay by use. This isn't really a ballot item. This is something I think the town government should mandate, meters in every home, so that, just like electricity, oil, gas, food, we all pay for what we use. Now, this isn't going to solve the aging infrastructure, but as the rates climb, I think we all need to take responsibility for our own usage, and only some of us are. And so, I'm putting out a plea here to the Select Board to think outside the box on this water issue and not just keep raising our rates, which are becoming crippling.
Okay. I believe, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, this, we agreed three years ago on these rates are going to go up, but this will be the last year at 11 percent?
This is the last year, I believe, where it's this high a rate.
Right.
Based on the initial three years ago.
We did that based on our assessment then, Abby. Unless, I think I saw you in here with fluoride, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. My memory, I'm getting, my memory's good.
Yeah, I've been watching this go up, and I'm going, how come I mean, nobody is saying anything? Nobody said anything in any of the four years.
You hit a lot, a number of things. One, the infrastructure is failing. I think you know, driving around, work is being done on the water lines and sewer lines as we speak. And those rates went up also. It's not going to make you feel any better, but we are one of the lowest municipalities in the state when it comes to water and sewer rates. We're really down at the bottom. I'll blame the Select Board, because I was on the Select Board for a number of years when we chose not to raise the rates to take care of the problems we had. That was a mistake we made. And that's why, three years ago, we stood up to the plate and said, we made a mistake and we have to do this to get back somewhere near where we need to be to get up with the current technology and deal with the aging issue we have with our water lines. Anybody else want to add anything on that thing?
Yeah.
And one, first of all, Abby, point well taken, and we'll address that again. Metering is a sore issue when you talk about it.
How long ago was that, Joe, that the town dealt with that meter?
July.
It was probably five years ago?
Yeah.
Five years ago?
Probably four, five years.
It was probably when the water rates were low.
Well, that's right.
Well, the water rates were low, and we had, we needed, depreciation was changing, we didn't have, we didn't have anything, really, in reserves to do any kind of, you know, system changes.
I think it was longer ago than that.
I'm an advocate of what you use, you pay for.
The rates have only gone up like this in the last four years.
Well, water, yeah, the water meter issue is what's longer going.
And the ballot issue is longer than that. The ballot issue was before my time, actually, on Select Board, it's 12 years ago. But what we have done since then is we went out and purchased meters, and then we worked out, we sent, if I recall, we sent, well, we did pass. We required the multifamily homes to do them. We did that maybe six, seven years ago.
That's still less than half of the community.
Yeah.
And as I said, I feel, I feel I'm subsidizing my neighbor who waters his lawn every single day. He's not paying any different rate for watering his lawn every day. If I were to water my lawn every day, my rate would go up. Or not my rate, but my, my bill would go up.
Your bill would go up, yeah.
And I think we haven't figured out quite a way how to get every single-family home to meter. It's expensive. The meters, I think, cost about $300 a piece. Right. Um.
Five hundred?
$500 a piece, thank you. And then, the cost of the plumber to install them. You know, so, it's like, does the town bear that burden, which is, would be really expensive?
Another year.
Abby, I'll tell you, yeah. Look, let me get, we'll have it on our next agenda for the meeting. I'll get Terry Morris, our water man, in here, too. We'll get the exact price. I thought there was a share price of this or something, Joanie. Wasn't it, they buy the meter and we?
They buy the meter, we maintain it.
Okay.
As long as they, the homeowner doesn't destroy it, take any amateur, or doesn't let it freeze, will take care of it.
Okay.
Rates will replace it.
Okay. Let us get all the facts. We'll have it on our next week's agenda, we'll have a discussion, okay?
And somebody should contact North Bennington, where everybody has a meter.
Yeah.
And figure out how they did it.
Just before you go, I want to address the rubber stamp idea. When it was presented, all these things were brought up, and the fact that, you know, we've increased the rates year after year after year. But the reason this was really brought about is, you've heard about the generator issue that we've had and trying to find funds to pay for that. And it seemed like different items kept coming up. Their time was up, and we had to pay for these new items. And we didn't have the money there for it. Really, what we were looking at was a budget and a book that wasn't balanced. And the reason it wasn't balanced was because of the issues that we brought up here. We weren't increasing the rates when we should have, and so, it kind of dug us into this hole. So, when these issues came up and we had to buy new things, we increased the rates slightly, so it wasn't a huge burden all at once to address these one, the one issue, in this case, the generator. So, this last time we went through, we said, hey, let's not do this again. Let's set a rate, let's make an increase that is more proactive than reactive, like we've done in the past. So, we've increased these rates to a point where it's supposed to help balance that budget, so in the future, we won't see these large increases time after time after time. So, it wasn't exactly a rubber stamp. There was some thought put into it. But I agree, there are creative solutions that we can also look at in other areas.
And just one more thing, I want to say, the burden for, I believe, the schools, the factories, and the rec center, and a lot of places that serve people who are not paying town water bills is on the people like myself, like those of you who live in town. And so, somehow, putting the entire burden on the, on the specific households that use town water is unbalanced, because people who don't use town water in their households send their kids to the schools, work in the factories where they expect to have running water and toilets.
But they all pay, they all pay a water bill. They have meters at the factories and at the schools, Joan?
No, she's saying, she's talking like me, has got my own well in septic.
Right, right.
There are several meters at every, there are meters at the high school, middle school, there are.
I think you missed the point.
The rec center is metered, all our car garages are metered, this place is metered.
Yeah, I think what Abby's getting at is if, if this place, well, say, let's say, one of the schools catches on fire, and we put it out with town water, the people in the school district benefit from that water use but aren't paying into the system or the maintenance or any of that.
Well, you get a tough place in the town for all this.
Right, and you can, you can, you can go on with that, well, but.
Bottom line is, nobody wants, I don't think anybody wants to raise these rates. I don't want to pay 100 or something, go over.
No.
And it's certainly not, it's certainly not rubber stamped. And we go through this stuff and trying to figure out what we can do. But 20 years, 22 years ago, when I moved to town, I remember looking at my water bill and saying, how can you run a water system on this? It's too little. And the fact was, it was too little. And, and the town has suffered for it. So, we're trying to get that back to right. I would be interested to know what a metered house water bill is in compared to, comparison to a non-metered water bill.
I'm paying.
I know what the rate is, but what's the actual cash at the end?
I pay between 185 and 220, 25. And I am a low user. Even with, I mean, there are only two of us there, even with two kitchens. I would say, I mean, when Mark White came to inspect it after it was put in, the numbers that he told me that were average, I'm way below that.
Tim, do you want to address that issue?
Yeah. Just a little history on this. Some of the reasons why the water rates have gone up in the sewer rates is we had a water treatment bond.
Right.
That the voters voted for and passed that raised the rates. And Abby talked about the people on the outside that don't pay water and sewer. They lost a water and sewer discount a number of years ago. They used to get a discount for not having water and sewer. You got it, and different ones got it. And they gave up that discount. And, and in return, what we said is all the water and sewer expenses will be spared by the water and sewer users. So, those people that live on Ponell Road and.
Me.
And Bryce Lane and all those areas, lost a sizable discount on their property tax. And that was the exchange that, that the water users and the sewer users would pick up those expenses. And also, when someone builds a house out in the rural area, they spend six, seven, eight thousand dollars putting in septic systems and, and have to maintain them with power and everything else that the, the people don't on the water system. And actually, a two-unit, or a three-unit, or a four-unit apartment house pays less with the meter than those people that, you put four houses together without the meter. So, you know, the, I'd think twice before I started to think about putting in a metering program, because it's very, very expensive, it's expensive to maintain, and you aren't going to see that much of a shift.
Well, there's time, we ought to have.
There's always going to be somebody that washes their car and waters their lawn. I mean, that's, that's going to happen. But to go to a whole metering system because of that, I'd be very cautious.
Yeah. Joe, I'd like to have the information relative to other towns of our size.
Yeah, that's right. I think it's, it's time to have the discussion again.
Communication.
So, we'll get it on the agenda, we'll present all that stuff. But, you know, we're going to, we're going to hear from the outside folks exactly what Tim just said also. You know, Michelle and I were talking this morning in the office about what it costs here to put her well in 550 feet and keep it up and maintain it. And I know my water softener eats a lot of salt all month long and that kind of stuff. But we'll have the discussion. We ought to see what the other towns are, bring it forward till you see where it is. We'll bring up the cost of the metering again and, and see what happens. Now, whether it goes on the ballot or not, it'll be a decision we'll make later on. So, thanks for bringing it up. Any other citizens? Michael?
I'd like to talk about, take a minute, and we have a new board, and I'd like to have the board maybe consider reconsider the Johnson Control property changing, bring in revenue. The owner still wants to bring business to Bennington. He can't do it with just industrial. I'd like you to reconsider changing it to commercial industrial. As you all know, it brings in about $7,000 a year now. If it was developed, I'm sure it would bring in comparable to about $200,000 a year in taxes to our town, plus jobs, plus taxes to our state. And as you just heard, Abby and other people, and you read in the paper about the school budget should be in shutdown, I think it's a perfect time to bring this back up, let the owner make money for himself and us. It's time, it's been 20 years, it's just time to move this property so that we, we as a town will have more revenue coming in. I know the major repairs you've got facing you in the next few years, I'm not going to bring them up now, but just for an example, we would like to take over the Amory someday, maybe. Well, how can we take over the Amory if we don't have more revenues coming in? You can't put all these things on the average taxpayer of Bennington, similar to like Abby, she's trying to live here and water and everything else. So, I just wish this board would reconsider that. You can do it under law, you can change what the other board did. And if you don't want to do that, I have a petition, I didn't bring it with me today because it's pretty wet out there. Put it on the ballot. It's an advisory petition, put it on the ballot and let the people decide in large. But I think this board does have the courage to see the facts and let the man make some money for himself and for the town. So, I'd like to know if you do any of that, I just asked you.
Board?[1582.81]
I'd like to speak first, by the way.
Yep.
I'd like the people of Bennington and the board to know about an incident last Friday night, that when we started earlier in the day, on Friday afternoon, I got a call from the town manager saying that Mr. Bethel had inquired about my vendor's fees. Now, five years ago, long before I was elected, I made an arrangement with the town manager to pay it over time, for which I have always paid it. Nevertheless, Friday evening, Mr. Bethel was at a local convenience store that I went into, and I went and I asked him, I said, "You trying to pick a fight with me?" And he jumped on me about my sign, which I leave overnight on the street block, it's not an impediment to the walkway, and he said it's in violation of the ordinance. I don't know whether it is or it isn't, however, if it is, I'll do the right thing. And I asked Mr. Bethel, I said, "What is your problem?" And he said, "Change the Johnson, your vote on Johnson Controls, and you'll never hear a word from me." Now, this is the kind of thing that he has resorted to, threats, harassment, harassment to black people and the people of Bennington, I'll tell you that.
Okay, any other board members? Let's go back to his issues.
Excuse me, excuse me, accusation just made.
These are facts.
Yeah, this...
I think we need to speak to the idea enough.
Let's, yeah, let's have that discussion between you two and the newspaper guy, right there, okay? Let's address, let's address your issue first.
You gotta remember, excuse me, you gotta remember, I didn't bring it up, okay? I was accused of something, so just went for the record.
Okay, the issue first issue, anybody want to talk about select board or want to make a motion, or you suggest you want to change your mind to overrule the planning commission and last vote of select board, change the zoning?
Greg? I'll make a comment, I think we've, I've discussed this and I've researched it quite a bit, I'm not interested in changing the zoning of that property. I do support the policy that we put in place that if Mr. Gladstone has something realistic that he'd like to discuss, that's fine, I do not want to see something up there that's going to complete, compete with Northside Drive, which obviously needs help. I'll tell you, you know, if, if we rezone that today, I would not be surprised if Walmart pulled up stakes and built a new Walmart up there. It's what they do, they have a great relationship with Mr. Gladstone's company, and now we have a hole on Northside Drive. But the bigger issue to that is, is simply the relationship between the number of people we have and the number of retail stores that come to town. I mean, a lot of people think that they'll just keep coming and coming, and we'll still fill them and fill them, but if you look at the parking lots in these stores we have, there's not a lot of people, they're not begging to be bigger, and we're not begging for more. When we, there's, I have a study here from MIT, it came out in 2011, that as you expose your community to more and more discount Asian-produced manufactured products, it actually reduce the, the wages of the workforce in town. We don't need more retail jobs in town, those aren't the kind of jobs we need. We need to get the people out of the retail stores and back into the factories where they were working as engineers and make better jobs in town. Now, if Northside Drive was busting at the seams and we needed more retail space because town was growing and everything like that, that's a whole nother story, but I think to put in the town's ninth strip mall to compete with the other malls in town and the other commercial property that people trying to move is, is an irresponsible move from an economic standpoint. Nothing against Mr. Gladstone, he, he makes very nice strip malls, I mean, you look at his website, you can see them, he maintains them, he owns other property in town, he keeps it full, he keeps it maintained. I don't think it's a good move for Bennington right now, I think the people of Bennington have made that clear, and I think we've spent enough time on it, but certainly everyone has the opportunity to do that as they get to the board.
Other board members? Justin?
You know, I've been for this all along, I disagree that we don't have an opportunity to expand commercially in that sector. I've looked at numerous studies, say we're leaking certain, you know, certain shopping dollars outside to New York, Massachusetts, things of that nature. We definitely need the revenue, I adamantly believe that we can support commercial growth in that area, and I also feel strongly that the likelihood of anything coming into that property industrially and building up there is extremely small. So I do believe that for twenty years, we've spent enough time collecting minimal tax dollars from that property when we could absolutely be, you know, seeing just property taxes and hundreds of thousands of dollars, not to mention what this state would see in tax revenue, on top of the jobs, and I know, you know, they're not great jobs, nobody's going to argue that they are, with the fact of the matter that they exist, and town would better need it, so.
I guess I have a question.
Well, let's see, you got a question, you finished, Justin?
Yeah, I'm finished.
Okay, John?
My question was going back to, you said we have, we have a plan in place and it's zoned the way, Greg, this question should be, I'm sure other people can answer, but we have, we have it zoned the way we want it to be zoned, and if Mr. Gladstone comes up with a different plan, then we're willing to hear it. So, when I, when I heard that, I'm asking, if he comes up with a commercial plan, are we willing to change it for that plan if we like it? Is that what you're saying?
That's at our discretion, yeah.
Is that our discretion? So, if we were to change it to something that was commercial or industrial, do we still have, what are our abilities when they come in and say, "Hey, it's commercial, we want this commercial business to come in," what's our authority in saying, "That doesn't fit what we're doing, we can't have it, it won't work"?
Is that actually appropriate? Can I ask for an answer?
Well, I mean, I'm not sure exactly what the question is, the question is, what is it zoned now?
Well, let's, let's just say that the zoning has changed, now it's commercial industrial, and we have commercial businesses wanting to come in, it's something that some people think will be great for the town, other people think that it might not be great for the town, and it's ultimately, I'm asking, what say we have in stopping it or letting it grow?
If it's a use that's permitted and it complies with the regulations, you have to issue a permit even if ninety percent of people think it's not a good idea, but that's how it is.
So as long as it fits into...
But it's not commercial, we're talking about the issue is, is commercial or industrial, commercial industrial doesn't fit into the, the plan anymore, that, that was where the issue started, to change its zoning, we'd have to change it to commercial.
Just.
Right.
Actually, I don't believe that was presented, was that the plan, the plan commercial industrial? Is it more commercial?
We would have to, we, to maintain an ability to put industry in there, we would have to change it to commercial and then allow more things into the commercial zone, which would affect the whole strip of Northside Drive.
Right, that was what the planning commission came up with.
Right.
We put a strictly just said that that particular piece of property we're going to make commercial.
Right, we did that.
That's not what they recommend.
Because it was within state statute, that was the...
Well, actually, Dan, you said at one point, you could strip it, change that to just commercial, correct?
If you, if the board wanted to, certainly you could.
Commercial, but not commercial industrial, right? You couldn't make a, you couldn't spot zone that property and make it commercial industrial with this list where next door, you couldn't do it right there.
That would be, that's where it might, that's where you run up against public issues, if it was a uniquely zoned property, all the properties around it didn't have the same character.
Well, you could just, you could expand that into commercial because the rest of the district is commercial.
Yes.
Really, if being industrial.
It affects two, two districts, so you, yeah, if we decided to change it to commercial, that would be legal.
And what the policy said after we wrote it was that if, not just Mr. Gladstone, but any developer out there that own any property, if they had a project that they want to put into any area that we had zoned anyway, it's up to the legislative body of this town, us seven, decide, along with the expertise we draw in, decide whether that is the right fit for the town.
So it is well known, I mean, I'm just kind of reiterating here because I want it to be clear, it's well known that a commercial business or property can, that can become a commercial property.
Before you were elected, Mr. Gladstone was here, we invited him forward, he came forward with a, a model, and nothing in concrete, but how it could be, actually a map, how it could be developed into a, into a commercial piece of property.
So that's only been a few months at this point?
Right.
Maybe a year?
Less than a year, probably.
So, maybe a few months to a year, nothing's going about, we haven't had any commercial business that wants to land there yet.
Correct.
But it's also still zoned industrial, you know, that, that was the issue I had with the policy, that if you could put, create a separate line of bureaucracy, another layer of red tape, and kind of put the cart from the horse.
Well, there's a lot of red tape in that property, no matter what you're going to put in there.
So, I mean, you know...
If you didn't want to put a parking lot in there, you're going to, you're going to have some red tape when you bring the backhoe in.
Sure. It's just like, it's just like anything.
Yeah, well, no, that, that piece of property's not...
That's...
Yes.
This is, hang on, we'll get you again, Mike.
Some of the stuff that's being skewed out here isn't even true.
Mike, we'll get you, and again, discussions with the board right now.
Could I just interject a couple questions, comments? When's the town plan up for review on its own?
It's about a year and a half.
Yeah, okay. I don't see any great urgency to get this resolved within a year, year and a half. I'm for increasing the tax base, but frankly, I'm not for creating a spot situation that's only respecting one particular commercial use, or in, and I think we really have to look at it across the spectrum, there may be other areas in the town which we want to visit as well. I'm sort of tired of hearing this discussion, I'm, I'm sure we're going to hear about it in the next two years when we look at the plan, but I'd rather look at it in the whole rather than at...
We've had the same discussion over, we have a civilian, we have a, we have a, citizens come forward, asked two things, so I'm asking any board member, is there a board member here ready to make a motion that the board reconsider the zoning of Johnson Control? If so, make the motion.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor? Two. All opposed? Five. Next issue, is the board willing to circumvent the policy of getting five hundred plus signatures to put it on the, on the next March's ballot to let the people do it?
As an advisory vote?
Not a motion, as advisory vote, have a motion, do I have a second?
I think there needs to be more discussion, maybe that's just for me, but, and I'm sorry that this is dragging on.
Do you want to make a second on the motion? There's a motion on the floor. It's not discussion yet, there's a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Sure, I'll make the, you know, second, go ahead, so you can comment if you want.
Well, my discussion is about the entirety of this conversation, and, and the fact that we need, I mean, it's a philosophical, a philosophy of economics that we're talking about here, about how we have, I mean, there is data produced about what we're losing from this town, where people are traveling outside this town, so there is a commercial business that would flourish here and wouldn't take away from what we have because we don't have it to provide, so where are these businesses going? And then we're also counter, and we're talking about, I mean, it's, it's a large conversation, but it's difficult to have, and it's difficult to have people on the solution in place, so...
Okay, again...
I'm sorry that it's dragging on.
I don't care about the dragging on, let's follow the procedural procedure, I've got a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
No, Tom already did.
Tom did.
That's why we're having this discussion.
So the motion and a second is to place a non-binding article on March's ballots to let the people decide whether the zoning of the Johnson Controls should be changed from its current industrial use to commercial use. Is that the gist of what you're trying to do?
Commercial or commercial industrial, whichever.
CI is not permissible, if I understand, Dan, is that correct? Let's do it correctly before we...
Well, for changes, yeah, we'd have to look at the surrounding properties.
All right, then, commercial.
Okay, so everybody clear?
That's a huge difference.
Yeah.
I don't argue it's not really a huge difference because if you make it commercial, it will go commercial, industrial or commercial, it will go commercial because that property on there has indicated that there is no interest in industrially wanting to be commercial, and so I don't think it really does matter.
But to my previous point, if it's already, we've already given him the right to go commercial, if he brings it up to us and it hasn't happened, then if we're putting it commercial doesn't mean it's going to happen.
That's right.
That's true. That's very true.
Or putting it commercial industrial doesn't mean it's going to happen, so, so you can't say that it's definitely go commercial.
But the request, the request in the motion is for us to not require the five hundred plus signatures to place this article on the ballot. There's a motion, there's a second.
So, this is just for non-binding?
Non-binding.
Advisory vote.
To let the people of Bennington decide, seeing how folks are not happy with the legislative body's decision on this, okay? Any further discussion? All in favor? One, two, three? All opposed? So motion defeated.
Thank you, all go get a circular motion.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, next, any other citizens out there? Yes, ma'am, could you please state your name and...
I'm Nancy Sanford, and I moved to Bennington five years ago. I've been coming to Bennington for twenty-five years, so I know the areas and I know the places to go, but I'm disabled, and I have multiple disabilities, and my, I have some pictures I'd like to pass down this way.
If you're down at Bradford Street, we've looked at them already, I mean, I know what you're, what we're looking at. We'll take the pictures anyway.
They're all mixed in. I also have some paperwork from a John Kaplan.
Oh, yes.
Can I just pass the pictures down?
No, I'm sure we will take something off.
Okay.
Yep, I'll work with you.
No, I'm sure.
Then we'll just pass these down?
There's only a couple of these to share. There's four.
I tried to be as specific as I could with them, and as, as you're looking at them, you will come across to one of myself walking, and a friend was walking with me, having to be really hot out and I can't be on the heat, out in the heat, and my walker got caught in one of the holes, and it lifted up the walker as such. If I didn't, if I didn't have control of it, I would have fallen. And this has happened to me many, many times over the last two years. I did not know how to go about it, I've met some awesome people here, and I'm looking forward to working with you as well. The sidewalks that I have proposed here are not on this letter that you've given out. And I'd like to know when would be the time to come and vote for those, because obviously this year's done.
Yeah, let me, did Mr. Kaplan tell you he'll give us some money to do this?
Um, well, I have a call in to him.
We know the program.
I'm sorry?
Isn't Bradford in design right now to be done, it's on the priority list?
It's on the budget for next year.
It's on for next year, it's already there for next year.
What is for next year?
The sidewalks widen and then repair and the curving?
On these specific roads?
On Bradford Street.
So all Bradford will be done, okay.
Stafford's on that list, too.
Yes, Stafford's on it also.
So next...
When was that?
Yeah.
That was the January budget we were discussing.
So as I understand it, next year Bradford Street and sidewalks will be put in?
Don't be afraid to call us in January when we do the budgets, because we're trying, I, I want to keep that on top of the list, we had that conversation with these budgets, and we're, when we had Silver Street, and we have a lot of, a lot of streets that need a lot of attention like this, we can't do them all every year, or all in one year, but we, we did specifically ask Highway to keep Bradford and Stafford on the top of the list for next year so we can get that done, several reasons. One, we've got the obvious safety issues, women with strollers walking every day, folks with walkers, there's also people have made significant real estate investments in that neighborhood now, commercial, you know, buildings, the renovation of Eight O Two's Main Street, and, and, you know, I want, I want to see those people get the support from the town so that neighborhood comes around appropriately and the infrastructure's kept up appropriately. There's marble on that sidewalk, which, you know, I'd love to figure something to do out with it, but it's certainly not a good sidewalk surface.
I can't walk on Bradford Street.
We're focusing on the area, right now we've got a Pleasant Street project going, it's not where you're talking about, but it's up in that area, okay? In addition to what Greg's talking about, you know, we've got people going to wreck some, both kids and adults use those streets, so it's our priority, we're there. I just, this, I'll ask a question, did you talk to Mr. Kaplan?
I have a call in to him.
Okay, he's going to tell you there is a program, he's not going to tell you where Bennington will fall out with the priority, the money they have for that program, we've gone after this before with the Chamber, Commerce, everything, for bike paths and this kind of stuff. We're pretty low on the priority list when you, when you look at how the state's going to release that money to do the bike and pedestrian program, but we've recognized the need of that area to do it, and that's why, as I said, Bradford, Stafford, and right now, as you, as we speak, I believe Pleasant Street is, is ongoing, is it not?
The design is.
The design is, yeah.
That's great, thank you very much. On Main Street from Mensers, Mercer's or Mensers Shop, okay. If you're going north to, if you're going north of that, on the right-hand side of the sidewalk, you cannot, I, I'm in the road, I'm in the road, if you see me, please be careful because I'm in the road. There's people that I've talked to that live on that part of Main Street on that side.
I'm confused what we're talking about.
Talking about Stafford in there?
No, I'm talking about another...
Where's Mensers?
On Main Street.
That's the gas market by the beach, or maybe...
Eighteenth Street.
Yeah.
Up to Henry's.
Got it.
On the right-hand side, some of the, end of the driveways that are, could be closed off as, as a sidewalk, you, you can't, I can't, there's no way, so I'm now walking in the streets of Bennington.
What's wrong with the driveways? It wasn't clear.
They're horrific.
Has it just deteriorated?
Deteriorated. Where, I, I don't know if the town did this, but where the persons paved that, they've repaved it and repaved it, like you'll see in all those pictures, it's not, it does not require a need for repavement, it requires to have it totally redone, and, you know, it's very hard for me to walk down a street and get called all kinds of names, and I can't do anything about it, and I don't think it's fair. It's my only way to get into town the closest way, I suffer asthma and emphysema, so on hot days I just can't go out. On other days I can go out, but I, I do this, my girlfriend said, "Do you know you never look up when you walk?", and I said, "I don't, because I'm looking at the sidewalks." So, another quick story and then I'll finish. I work at the Bennington Free Clinic here in Bennington, and over the winter months, was walking home with a friend, and at night, with the glare of the lights or the moon, the shadows are absolute, I don't know, I, I am so afraid to step, so I'm walking home and my friend yanked me and pushed my walker like three feet in, and I'm like, "Oh my God, what are you doing, Nancy?". As he was doing that, a car came up on the curb, if he did not do that, I would have been dead, because I can't look up, because I'm not, I'm like scared to death. Try, you know, try walking straight when it's shadowy and no glasses, and that's pretty much how I feel, and I know all the other people that I've spoken to through the Vermont Independent Living have been a great support to me and has enabled me to come to you and be prepared while I came to you, and hope that you understand that some people with disabilities are rejected, and not, not by meaning on purpose, not on purpose, but it's, you know, you don't think of this much of a gouge in the, in the road when it's three-inch gouge. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Charlie, you want to say something?
Yeah.
Get the mic, please, Charlie.
Yeah.
And state for the audience who you are, Charlie.
Yeah, I got a question.
There we go. My name is Charlie Murphy and I work at the Vermont Center for Independent Living. It was brought to our attention just recently that when the new sidewalks are put in, apparently there's an old way, old pattern, and/or a new pattern.
They have pictures.
Yeah. And I gather, you know, Nancy passed along a picture.
Good sidewalk.
Yeah. And when the sidewalks are put in, there's kind of a, you know, like a wider gap between the two pieces that are butted together. And the question was, why is it done this way and not done the other way? So, thanks.
Okay. Let me ask you, Charlie. Did you get your answer from...you sent a message to Stuart, Dan, and did you get your answer back as far as...
I did hear you.
Did you get your email back that you requested...did Stu get ahold of you or Mike?
Oh, yeah. Stu got ahold of us.
Okay.
But this issue about the sidewalk, it's popped up the last 20 minutes.
We'll look into that. I don't know. Mike, don't let it answer. Mike, you got an answer?
Little sidewalk design. I can tell you our experience from the town's perspective in dealing with Pleasant Street, a wider gap is a requirement by the state. So, when we were redoing Pleasant Street, it's not necessarily preferred in my conversations with RJ and his...and the way the town actually does the sidewalks. But on Union Street, my apologies, on Union Street, when we redid Union Street, you'll see a wider gap. And those were required under state requirements.
So, is the expansion gap is wide, as we're told. So, it's probably causing less buckling in the winter time.
Yeah. But then it also increases, you know, the bounce that people are going through when they're using a chair, using a walker.
Are there other materials that we could use?
No, we're bound by the guidelines. Because it was a grant, it was based on the State of Vermont's guidelines for that grant installing sidewalk. We won't necessarily need to do that on Pleasant Street because we'll be putting in the actual sidewalk ourselves. So, that was another way to get around that, too. Again, that was one of the added requirements that adds to the overall cost when doing grant work.
And Bradford is going to be a town project also?
Bradford, Silver Street, Jefferson Avenue.
Those are grants, so they'll be the standard with. And I don't know what that is, in talking with RJ, but I do know that when we did Union Street, it was required.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that seems to, you know, cause more of a problem for folks to choose. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. Are there any other citizens who would like to speak to the board? Okay, if not, moving right along. Joanie, you want to come up? Borrowing, tax anticipation. Tim, you're part of this, too?
Welcome. Thank you, Chair.
And before we get started, I will again recuse myself as I...well, I just let the people know I am an employee of People's United Bank, but I am in no way part of this government banking, so.
This is just my yearly. I'm here every year as past treasurers have been. This is just in tax anticipation.
Hey, John? John? Move out. Go ahead. Play the tension we're doing here.
Tax anticipation, borrowing. I would like to...I just do it as a line of credit. The line of credit is for $2 million. I don't borrow all the $2 million. I just borrow as I need it.
What did we use last year, Joanie?
I asked for $2 million and it was 1.7.
We've gone as high as $3 million since I've been on the board.
We've gone as 2.5. I did 2.5 a few years ago.
Yeah. So, everybody understands what we're doing. And you need to understand if you don't. I mean, we have an obligation to pay the school portion of the taxes when they are due. Any delinquent taxes fall on us until we collect them. So, that's why we need this money toward the end of the year, usually, to cover the obligations we have, not only the budgets, but our warrants we have. And I don't think we've ever conceded this in my time on the board, anyway.
Do we have the motion of waiving and reading on this?
Yes, we do.
I'll get that motion in a second.
Okay. Any discussion on waiving and reading? Not all in favor? That's seven. Okay. Now, I take a motion to approve some borrowing.
Second.
Okay. Second. Any discussion on borrowing, $2 million? All in favor?
Aye.
And that's unanimous.
Three places for this one.
Okay. So, we'll send that around. Tim, you also have to sign this. Is that correct, the town clerk?
Yep.
All right. Anything else, Joanie?
Thank you. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thanks for sitting with us.
Okay. Well, we're waiting on that. John, you want to come up to talk about the Better Bennington Corporation budget and work plan?
Questions? I submitted them to you.
And you don't get any of this tax anticipation money.
Excuse me, say that again?
You're not getting any of this tax.
No, I submitted it. The budget amount that we asked the town for in November is the same. No increases here. You have copies of the work plans and the budget in front of you. So, I'm here tonight just to present it for you folks to ask questions and/or accept it.
Just a question. How often is the organization audited, either internally or externally?
Once a year.
Once a year.
Yeah. Love Cody. We do a compilation, which is required for a fella once.
I didn't hear the question. Who's the question?
How often we audited? Which is, we do that in December. Well, now, we moved it to our annual meeting to right after the July. So, we now do it in right after the end of the fiscal year, which is July.
Okay. Any question on the BBC budget? It'll increase, Tom?
Just the membership continues to expand.
Yeah. Membership does. Sponsorship, up and down, starting on the rebound now. We have a lot of banks that sponsored us in the past. And for the past couple of years, they've cut back. But this year, they're going back up. And we have a couple of new sponsors that we haven't had in the past. So, I think economy-wise, things are on the rebound.
Do the members, they get something in the mail? I'm speaking specifically about my...
Yeah.
I don't think I got one.
I think you have it at your house now.
It should have gone offline.
Yeah. I think you probably have it at home now. We just went through the renewals, I think a couple of weeks ago. We finished or a week ago.
And it went to an annual renewal, right?
It did. We're going to bill it annually. If somebody individually wants a certain date, that's fine. We can do that, too.
But it's common anniversary for pretty much everybody now instead of chasing.
But publicly, if somebody, like a business, has a better time come December, we'll pick them individually. We have a program that can highlight it and kick it out to us and bill somebody individually.
Okay. Any questions on BBC Web?
When I look into the back of the sludge presentation here, it looks like committee budgets, some of these have had numbers filled in and some don't. I'm just curious as to why that is for one. And two, where do these numbers correlate the committee budget to the actual line-by-line item budget?
You're looking at the work plans for the individual committees?
Okay.
The ones that don't have anything don't cost anything.
Okay.
The ones that do have something, cost something. So, which one in particular are you looking at?
Well, I guess I could pick something.
Well, I'll answer it generally. If, let's say, I'm looking at one and it says budget amount $500. Next to that has a start date, target date. It should be in the budget roughly around the start...between the start date and target date. Or sometimes, depending on it, 30 days or 60 days after, depending on when we would actually pay that bill. Like, if you're looking for like a marketing brochure, we say July to December, $2,000. We've probably put that in a little afterward because once it's completed, we'll get a bill from the printing company and then put that into the budget.
Okay. And I've seen on here now, some of these amounts are nominal. I'm not questioning about what the amounts are. I'm just curious, like, I see like $200 for scheduled annual retreat. Is that...where does that $200, that type of expenditure that I see in this committee, where does that actually fall into, into the line item budget? Is that salary money or is that like...
No, that's annual retreat. That's a board expense. When we spend a weekend pulling everybody together, when we do our work plans, we review our mission, our vision, and start prepping for the budget.
Okay. That good?
Go ahead, Joe.
John, under business retention and the improvement retention commitment, page two, Joe, just curious about the Google mapping. I wasn't aware of the Google mapping that they actually charted.
Actually, Joe brought that up with me about a week ago also. There's, I guess, a lot of programs. And Joe kind of gave me the head slap for not tooting our horn at some of the things we do. And my board actually says that to me a lot, too. But Google is just one of the projects we're doing. What that is, is I think you're probably all familiar with Google Street View, where you can go into Google, click on the Street View, and you can drive right up into now Main Street virtually. You can see everything turn 360 degrees. About a year or so ago, they started extending that with a program called Google Business Profiles. And we're fortunate to have a Google certified photographer in Bennington, who we've been working with now for about six months, maybe a little bit more. And what it is, is now you can't...you don't have to just go down the street. You can actually turn and go right into a business.
So, who besides Fiddlehead have we done already?
We've done about 30 of them so far.
Okay. Has anybody pulled them up, looked at them? Very impressive you have them.
They're cool to look at.
Were you in when they did the street?
No.
No. Well, we got a very brief tour. Google's keeping an eye on us for a couple of reasons. One, downtown has completed Street View, which has been for a couple of years. You can't request when they come or what they film. And for security reasons, they won't tell you when they're coming. But they've done a few sections when we were under construction, like especially the police station. So, I just put in a request when they're back up in New England to redo South Street or North Street. And if you go through downtown now, you'll notice that some of the streets, if you come to the four corners, if you're facing north, everybody's in shorts. But if you go further north and come back down, they're all bundled up. And J. Stewart Johnson statues are on the street the same time that the Moose are on the street, which are two different...three different...two years apart. So, as you piece it all together, you realize it's done at all different times. So, they can do sections anytime they want. So, I told them what we're doing with business profile. And we want to have 85% of all of downtown be able to take a virtual tour for all of our businesses...through all the businesses. And with the help of Mike from the town office, we're setting up a Google collective calendar for the community as well. So, I asked them to keep an eye on us, that we are going to be fully Street View, 85% business profile, use Google Calendar, sort of Google, Google, Google. Want them to come back and give us a heads up so that we can kind of stage a filming so that Bennington looks perfect online when their people are Google mapping, because everybody's doing that now. And online competition is much greater than big box competition. That's really our threat and where we have to compete nowadays. BBC already has an online website that local merchants can use as their website if they don't have one. And now, we're going to link all of their Google profiles to either our website location or their website or Google. So, anywhere you go, downtown Bennington's going to be 360 degrees inside and out. That's what that program's about.
One more question.
Go ahead.
On the same page on the partnerships, as you know, I'm calling meeting tomorrow night for discussing signage.
Signage.
Signage. What's the $100 bucks going to be used for?
Say that again?
On the same page, develop signage for Route 279 entrance. There's $100 bucks there allotted, but I didn't say.
We're already working with the Chamber of Commerce. We're doing a display on 279 East. And Greg's kind of doing some consulting with us, or for us, on signage. Where we're going to take some of the old Moose that are still in town, plus the traveling Catamount. We're working with Kelly Fuels and putting up a sign, make tracks to Bennington in an attempt to give them something to look at before they get on 279 and make the decision to go straight as opposed to going right. Depending on how that ends up or if we can see any impact from it, we're going to start looking west to do the same thing. And then, of course, when the Welcome Center opens up, to do activities up there to make sure people come to town.
Greg, didn't I see some correspondence of you about signage?
Yeah. That was...this is actually one of the subcommittees that are backing the Corporation, which Dan is part of, him and Mike McDonough and Eddie Eddington. It's the Bennington Informational Sign System. And that's a function within Bennington proper. If you remember several years ago, there were signs that would point you to the colleges and the covered bridges and the museums and things. And they were taken down. They were in bad repair, but the state had also advised the town that they were not in compliance with state highway laws. So, we couldn't have just put them back up, you know, resurfacing, put them back up. We had to come up with a design. And so, for about, what, the last five years, Dan, we've been submitting designs to the state, having them tweak them and send them back. You know, it's become kind of a career for a couple of people doing it with Dan on a volunteer basis. And last Thursday, I sat in on a conference call with Dan with the state agency, and they approved the design.
Great.
So, we now have an approved design to go ahead with the Bennington Informational Sign System. Designs are done. We have target, you know, directions and whatnot. Now, we have to get approval on the placements and things like that and come up with funding. But one of the things that they require for the approval is that we get approval from the select board and the planning commission that they're on board with it. One thing I pointed out, Dan, is that every...the VCRD, the cultural summit, any of these meetings we go to where we get committee together, a number of people always ask why we don't have signage within the town that directs people around to the attraction of the town. So, it's a good step forward after a lot of work and a lot of...
Great.
Great.
Any other questions on the budget? John, we got off a little bit, but it's all...it's back to you.
And, you know, a lot of that has to do with that because we were working with Greg, obviously.
Right.
And funding for the signs. It's in there a couple of different ways, a couple of different committees.
So, John's here with his budget. Do we have a motion to approve the budget?
I'll second.
Second? Have a discussion on it? All in favor? John, great work. Keep it up, okay?
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Good ladies. Joanne, you going to be around or are you leaving? I'm going to break in here off the agenda. See, I got Josh Shanahan and Joanne Ehrenhausen here to talk about land use on the Veterans Home. We're changing our policy. As you know, we've been restricted as far as vendors being able to serve alcohol on a hospitality tent. That's going to be changed so that if you have a venue coming to town looking for a place like...
Garland.
Well, I won't say anything. Like we got out there. Again, we charge nothing for the use, but we need prior planning. So, I just want you two to know that. It's a policy that's being changed right now as we speak, okay?
Great.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next item is to...is there anybody had a chance to read the agreement between the town and the unions?
Yeah.
But frankly, this is the same agreement that's been used, pretty much the template. The only changes are the areas that we've negotiated.
Yep.
So I'm comfortable with the form, the content we can document.
Okay. There's been traffic between Stuart and all of us and I assume everybody's comfortable with the agreement we've had. So if there is no discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve ratification of this contract.
So moved.
And I have a second. Any discussion on it? All in favor? That's unanimous. Danny, has the, has the membership voted on it yet?
Not yet. I believe we shall tomorrow.
Tomorrow. So we ratified today, they vote tomorrow. Okay, thank you.
Michael said I just have two signatures.
Okay. Okay. Appointments to boards of commission, the deputy health officer. We have a letter here from Kevin Goodyear, who has been there before and done that before. We've received no other requests, Michelle?
We have not.
Okay. So the issue is school-trained health officer. Do we want Kevin to continue with this?
Make a motion to appoint him in that position.
Okay. Motion. Have a second. Any discussion on appointing Kevin? All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Now, we've had a discussion. Abby's gone, but sewer rates, water rates. Is everybody clear on the plan that we had and where we go from here?
Yes.
We're actually at the Fort Peter Ag, obviously, right?
Right.
This is just one year outside of the plan that we came up with three years ago. We're 3% of the entry for probably, it's 3% we got in this quarter in this water rate.
The sewer fund is 3.
3 for sewer.
Yeah. We caught up on the sewer fund and now we're still catching up on the water.
And the intention is, bringing it in place, we ratify this amount of money. It would be the position where we think we need to be financially solventing forward. That's my understanding.
Well, that's what we'll discuss the next time it comes up. We only hope we are, okay? Minus any major catastrophes between now and the time we meet again to look at the budget for next fiscal year.
Isn't it the bottom, it's projected, there'll be small circles on both sides?
Yeah.
Right. We'll have that discussion again probably, what, March? Probably March is when we'll look at it again, see where we go. So there's no discussion. I'll entertain a motion to set the water and sewer rates for fiscal year '14.
So moved.
Made motion. Okay. Got a motion from Greg, second from Jim. Any further discussion? All in favor? And that's unanimous. Okay. Moving right along. Danny, manager's report.
The only thing that I mentioned this evening is that we paid close on fireworks money.
Yep.
I believe we're $11,000.
At the end of this afternoon, we're $500. I have $1,000 left.
$500 short?
You can use mine. Need to. I signed a check the other day.
Is that for her?
Well, it can be. It can be because I said, you know, either one.
I'd love to take that.
Sit down with Melissa and you and decide where that goes.
Yes, I actually have her check. I just didn't listen back.
You had to say, you had to sign check?
Right. I have that signed.
What did it say to? Town of Bennington, right?
Yeah.
All right. I want to see fireworks.
What do you have, this final one by the end with the cutoff? It's usually just a couple of days before the event.
We have enough money.
Yeah, they've already sent the deposit and what they do is Stu goes up and gives them a check, I think, the afternoon or the day of the fireworks. So that's when the balance is due.
So, let's see. Wait a minute. Is this our last meeting? Is this our last one?
Yeah.
What's, I'll ask the question Alice asked. When's the weather call? Who makes it?
I'm hoping that's Stu. That's my biggest decision I ever had in April.
I was involved with that last year and he was a nervous wreck, I'll tell you.
Greg, help me out a little.
You know, the way the weather's been this summer, spring, I tell you what, we better pin this thing down.
It's always dicey. It's always dicey.
Okay. So we'll make it appropriate. We're okay, but we'll still take donations if it comes in. We'll apply them to another good cause. Okay, thank you.
Or get an extra firework.
Anything else, Danny?
I think that's all we have.
All right. We'll start, Tom?
Nothing.
Greg?
One question is on this manager.
Go ahead, Jim.
I see, Dan, recreation field is policies. Are you going to take care of this and bring it back? But I thought we had decided to actually flex some data about using the Georgia Department of the summer. Has something changed from that?
No, I believe that isn't hurting.
It's ongoing right now.
Okay. We were trying to, oh, sorry. It just looked to me like it was coming back.
It is coming back to us.
Okay.
At the end of this season.
All right. The way I read it is like it was coming back.
Yeah. We're sitting down right now, the ex-senior town manager is sitting down and, who else on the town staff, somebody else in there, sitting down, discussing with the league managers. We've already paid back the money that we collected for this season that we felt we shouldn't. And it'll be a decision before we get up there. I think you're talking to the soccer guys right now, I think, is what they're looking at.
One of the things we'd like to do better this time is make sure we talk to all the prospective users, make sure that they feel comfortable or understand, go ahead.
The concern I had, Justin, was that we don't go too long because as of Monday, we're into the new budget. So we're affecting the income that's a line item on that budget. So I'm hoping we can get something up fairly well so we don't threaten that.
Was that, for '14, was that affecting the business?
That affects the last rates.
I don't think we're fully anticipating that those funds will be coming in, so it's not going to be as big as perhaps we thought.
Okay. But there's probably more reason to think that our expenses should be significantly higher than they were for '13 and I don't know.
No.
Or else we'll get any information from the real estate field on condition and whether or not it's active this year.
Yeah, all of those issues we looked at on facility retainers, we're also in care of the field to make sure that they understand how much you say to take in condition.
And where you say you have the worst condition again. Right. Yeah.
Okay. So Tom, you have nothing? Greg?
I'm all set.
John?
Just going to touch again on commercial industrial things. It's free. We are going to look at a plan on how to recruit new businesses. We've sat down, I can't remember all the parties that were there, but we sat down and tried to develop a new planning strategy to attract more businesses here. A lot of that initial strategy is going to be data collection, stuff that we don't know right now. And so part of that's going to be looking at, you know, land and usage and what people are looking at in terms of businesses now in 2013 and 2020 and looking in the future as well. So hopefully, part of that will be able to really identify whether or not that space is adequate for industrial or commercial. And then that will also help with that argument to rest. So that's all I have.
Michael, do you have an inventory of current empty buildings in the town of Bennington? I know the BBC has theirs for the downtown district. We have it for every place else?
I don't. Usually what I collect comes from the BBC and BCIC, who certainly have their constituents.
Chambers should have, should have some.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we don't require people to report vacant buildings. So, you know, that's, that becomes the only handicap, I guess, in that, in that respect. Same thing with registering businesses. It's hard to keep track of all new businesses because they don't, unless they're building something and require a permit, they don't have to register their business either. So.
Okay.
Mike, when John and myself and Bill, you have, you, Bill, that's the documentation that we talked about for needs and some of the areas in town. I think it would have been prudent for the board to actually see that. If you could send that along to them as well.
Sure.
That would be great. And just maybe a little synopsis of what that data actually shows, sort of interesting stuff. And I think everybody can learn a lot from it. It's probably why we have an unfair opinion of the space, actually.
And I can tell you, in talking with Peter at BCIC, his feeling from an industrial standpoint is that we're at capacity. There is no large vacant land available, developed anyways.
There's no structures.
Right, right, exactly.
The existing manufacturing structures are full this time, is what the BCIC is reporting.
And Mike is, Mike put in her packet, just a preliminary graph of the business recruitment program that we have asked for together. I'm in the process of reviewing it myself. I'm certainly going to have suggestions that I'm going to send through. Love for the board, and any suggestions you had, just send it on to him as well. So we can really kind of get everybody's hand in this and see how we can move forward because it's an exciting puzzle, finding some new management. So if anybody has any opinions on that.
I'm glad you brought that up because the, the hope is that, we didn't put it on the agenda because I wanted to give time to receive feedback, make changes so that by the time it came before a public meeting, we all had had some chance to give feedback and insight on it. So you have it in your packet, please review it. And then if you have suggestions, thoughts or opinions, feel free to pass them along in an email to me.
I just see this as just one component. I mean, the actual town plan is a component and that's got to be addressed. And it's really got to all dovetail because if we're going off piecemeal, which we sort of started to go again tonight, we're going to get nowhere but where we are right now. So I think really we've got to be working and drumming the same way. And the early, the draft looks pretty helpful to start with. I think it's going to be a good starting point.
Yep. Great.
It's a good starting point, but you know, I think it's, the timing, I think, is right. If we're looking at redoing the town plan next year and a half, this is kind of information which we'd be feeding the planning commission, those working on the town plan. If it's changing, we've got it there. Now's the time to get it in. So we have a comprehensive town plan a year and a half from now to vote on again.
Yeah. Great.
Okay, good. Jim?
I'm here.
Justin, I'll give you a turn yet?
Yeah, you did.
Sorry, Justin.
About every group of police, the only thing I would just kind of add on to that is we know there's things out there that we need more in Bennington. Really need to look to focus how we can get it here. That's the main, the main point. And this is the point I wanted to get across. So that's all I have.
Greg, Jim? Sure?
I have a couple of things tonight. First, I want to congratulate Chris Lozon from our police department. He was given an award for the longest acting, active-serving occupant protection technician